Franklin County Board of County Commission, now back in session. Next on the agenda will be Eric, Mr. Eric Lovestrang.
Good afternoon, I mean, good morning Commissioners, it's still morning. Sorry, I did not get my written report in in time for your packets. I did not have any action items. I have sent a copy to Lori, so she'll have it in the record. But I will give you just a brief rundown of what I had in there, basically, so you can ask me any questions if you want to. The renovation project has started on the facility down at the Mill Pond. They have taken all of the flooring out, all of the plumbing fixtures in the bathrooms there. They've cut out a big section of concrete right inside the front door where the slab was heaved up, and they've repaired that now, so it's moving forward. And they're talking about being substantially complete in thirty-five days from when they started, which was about a week and a half ago, so that's moving along. I participated with a presentation at the Holy Family Senior Center last week on the topic of backyard beekeeping. My staff and I participated at the Esterways Day Event over in East Point with the Research Reserve. We hosted an activity for youth in one of the rooms there, and we had several of our 4H youth also there with us participating and interacting with other kids that were coming up to the table there. They had about eight hundred people for that event, so as always, it was a really well-attended public event. I assisted with hosting the final public workshop for the five-year National Fish and Wildlife Foundation Grant Project that was being conducted jointly between Department of Agriculture, Fish and Wildlife Commission, and University of Florida faculty. That project is completed now, and that was the last meeting to kind of update the public on what transpired throughout that project. We had six Franklin County youth go to Tennessee and participate in this Southern Region Teen Leadership Conference this year. It's a really good program for youth and 4H to go to, and we've had several go to that each year for the past three or four years now. So they travel all the way up there and get to interact with a lot of other young people in leadership kinds of capacities and team-building activities. Our District Three 4H Council will be meeting tonight, and we are basically planning for events for our district. That includes five counties of 4H youth in our area, our region, so we'll have youth and one of our volunteer leaders that will be going to Leon County tonight to participate in that meeting at their extension office. Our FNP Program Assistant is doing the nutrition programming on a daily basis in the schools right now, doing lots of programming there with youth. I presented a program a couple of weeks ago at the St. George Island Civic Club on the topic of pine bark beetles and some of the damage that we've been seeing recently from pine tree die-off clusters in the county. Actually connects all the way back to Hurricane Michael and the kind of the beating that trees took at that point that sort of attracted pine bark beetles to come in and get established. Fortunately, the species that is impacting these areas is not the one that's considered a kind of epidemic species, which is the southern pine beetle. We've got other species of hips and graver beetles that are attacking trees, and their damage is generally much more limited and runs its course fairly quickly. And it is impacting a pretty small percentage of the overall pine canopy, even though you see patches of pine trees that have been dying since that storm. So I think that's about to run its course, and we shouldn't see a lot of that ongoing from here. And I've just been working with local citizens on a lot of topics, lawn and garden topics, related to pests and disease issues. Talking to somebody about viburnum disease right now and snails with another person's house on their crepe myrtle. I get those calls routinely every day. That's just a kind of a summary of some of the main things I've been working on.
I have a question for you. Mr. Chairman.
You're up.
Eric, when you said, did you say the remodeling on the building down there will be substantially complete in thirty-five days?
That's what the contract is, yeah. It's renovation work, no new construction, so carpeting, paint, sheet rock, minor stuff, all interior-related aspects to that project. A few windows being replaced, a bunch of doors inside and exterior doors being replaced, too.
Okay. I heard you comment that, but I wasn't sure, I understood you were at thirty-five days, so...
Yes, I actually think that we-
It's kind of quick, isn't it?
It is, but this is a company that knows how to organize their subcontractors. They've got them all on a schedule that's really tight, and they are doing what they had said they were gonna do at this point. Once we got started, yeah.
I hope they make it. I hope they make it, or you can get into-
I do, too.
You can get into your new home.
Yeah.
But that's awful fast.
I'm hoping we're able to move in by the end of the year and be ready and operating out of there by the end of the year. And we'll do some kind of a grand opening event and invite the public and the Commissioners to come down.
Mr. Chairman. I have one more question. Mr. Chairman. Eric, just a comment. I just wanted to emphasize what I had complimented you privately about. I am just so pleased that you brought those young people to us at our last meeting for the photography contest recognition. I thought it was great. And as I hear your presentations, I'm getting to know you over the past years, there's so many wholesome things you are doing for the county. On just behalf of the ecology and the word we learned last weekend biosphere of this county, I really appreciate what you're doing and look forward to just continuing to hear from you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
That's it?
Yes, sir.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda will be Ms. Kate Aguirre, Library Advisory Board.
Good morning Commissioners, Kate Aguirre, Chairman of the Library Advisory Board. To fill the vacancy created by the departure of the prior library director, the Library Advisory Board appointed an interview committee. The committee consisted of Advisory Board members myself and Shelley Shepherd, friends of the Franklin County Library, and President and Volunteer Coordinator Pam Tullis, and retired State Library employee and Carabelle volunteer Judy Ring. It was important to us that the interview committee represent not only the organizations that work with and support the library, but also the different communities that the library serves. After reviewing the resumes and interviewing all of the applicants, the interview committee and the Library Advisory Board recommend extending an offer to Mr. Corey Bard. Corey Bard received his Masters of Library Science in two thousand and eight. Since then, he has worked as a library director for over nine years. He's worked exclusively in rural libraries and is well-suited to small-town life. His experience includes running the day-to-day operations involving libraries and the staff of similar sizes to Franklin County. Corey is an experienced and successful grant writer. In his latest position, he utilized grant funding to increase programming for children and adults, as well as brought over twenty-five thousand dollars' worth of new technology to the library. He has formed a network of traveling musicians as he established music nights, something that would mesh very nicely with our existing music as a second-language program. And he also worked to increase programs to promote adult literacy. We had the opportunity to meet face-to-face with Corey when he visited the area a few weeks ago. At that time, we had an opportunity to learn more of his community dedication and his philosophy regarding rural libraries. He is enthusiastic about forging new relationships with other county entities and groups to improve the library's reach throughout the county and to expand services to our patrons. He has a deep understanding that a twenty-first-century library exists as more than a place to borrow books. It is a center of the community and offers extensive services to its patrons. The opportunity in Franklin County appeals to Corey, and his time here both a few years ago and then again a few weeks ago has solidified his desire to become part of our community. He stated to me that he found our area to be magical. I think the dolphins that followed him on his beach walk might have had something to do with that. He is confident in his ability to provide quality and professional library services to our two branches, and we heartily agree. Based on this, it is our recommendation that the county extend an offer to Mr. Corey Bard, and given his experience and education, we recommend a starting salary of forty-five thousand dollars. Thank you, I welcome any questions you may have, and I have copies of his resume if you would like.
I have one.
Go ahead.
Have y'all done a background check on this man?
That'll be part of the hiring process. We've done a cursory reference check, we've talked to some of the references he's provided, but once an offer letter is extended, he'll go through a background check and drug test.
Because I've never seen anybody leave seventy thousand to come to forty-five thousand.
He's interested in changing his location, so, you know-
Well, I mean, I understand, most people leave for more money than coming for half less.
Right, but he's not currently employed by the Library Association, by the Library in Ruidosso. He left that position a little while ago, and so he's currently unemployed and is looking to come here. He needed to make a change, and he wanted to do so geographically. This is a place that interests him, and therefore he'd be willing to take a cut in pay. You know, that's part of the reason he wanted to come here was to make sure that he could, he wanted to interview the area as much as we wanted to interview him. He looked at housing while he was here and the communities and where he'd like to live, and feels like it is something that he would be able to do.
Make a motion to approve this offer.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Parrish. Any more discussion on this? Y'all got to start him off before the pass?
That's what we recommend, yes, sir. He's coming to us with a Masters of Library Science. He's got almost ten years of library director experience in this area. That would be almost a sixty thousand dollar job, based on the budget, forty-five is the max that we can offer him, so that's what we recommend, yes, sir.
Well, in this area, he left for seventy. You say, well, he ain't have it, so something happened there. I'd like to know what happened there for him to leave. You say he no longer work there, right?
No, but I did have the opportunity to talk to the village administrator. It would be the equivalent of Michael Morone in our county that was liaison with the library and oversaw his day-to-day activities. She said that, given the opportunity, she would absolutely hire him again in a heartbeat, that he was a wonderful addition to the community. He, and was focused not just on library activities, he organized fund runs to benefit the food pantry, and he just was an amazing person to work with and to bring all the different entities within the community together. So I don't think, you know, based on that, that there's anything. I mean, we will do a background check, obviously, but I don't think based on that, we have, there are many skeletons hidden.
Yeah, but that still ain't tell him the way he lived. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
I oppose.
Thank you Commissioners.
Three to two.
Commissioner, I have an item, not so much for Kate, but because Kate is here, I have a library item I want to talk about.
Okay. Does she need to stay?
I'm sorry?
Does she need to stay?
Um, just in the audience, not at the podium. I'm sorry, Kate.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. All right. It's a little heavy on me, Commissioner. So, over the last few months, I've received complaints regarding the manner in which staff and volunteers were treating each other at the Franklin County Library Carabelle Branch during business hours. Some of these complaints roasted a level of possible litigation. So I contacted the county's labor attorney, Leonard Carson, and asked him to conduct a series of interviews, then provide a report that should include conclusions and recommendations. I emailed that report to you yesterday for your review. I concur with Attorney Carson's recommendations based on his investigations and findings, and asked the board to strongly consider item number two on his recommendations, to suspend the use of the daily volunteers at the Carabelle Branch until a director is in place to manage both branches. This action may require changes to the Carabelle Branch hours of operation, as there is one full-time employee and one part-time employee. I'll meet with the Advisory Board members to discuss these new hours. I've not received any complaints from the East Point Branch. Reason it bothers me to tell you guys, Commissioners, is because my heart goes out to the people of Carabelle that really depend on that library for way more things than just books. A lot of people use it, they need internet access, they need it for some of their state funding that they get for, you know, they don't call it food stamps anymore, but that kind of funding. But the, I, the treatment, there's a, I don't want to get too far into this, but there's a Team A and a Team B, where there's a mix of employees and volunteers on this side, employees and volunteers on that side, and it's clashing. It's, when I tell you Commissioners it's bad, it's bad. And it's without having, and if you read the attorney's report, without having a director in place, someone there every day to manage the staff there and to turn this around and get them all on the same page and understand that Carabelle Library Branch does not have their own set of rules. There's one set of rules that applies to both branches of the, of our library system. And, yes, it might be your opinion that Carabelle should be treated more like a community center, but it's not. It's a county library branch that has to follow rules, and the rules aren't there to be mean, the rules aren't there to hurt anybody. The rules are there to protect the county and protect the patrons of the library. And that's my recommendation to you. Without getting specific and speaking about specific incidents that have happened there, this is how I'm gonna leave it. I mean, you guys have read the attorney's report, it's, it's your call, but it's my recommendation. I support it.
Well, look, um, I guess that'll take care of the problem. Who causing the problem? If this gonna take care of the problem, what causing the problem, it'd be good. But if it ain't gonna take care, then it-
I feel this is a close, yes, I'm sorry Commissioner, I need to interrupt. I think this is the closest way to try and address the problem until a director is in place. What'll fix the problem is having a director in place to manage the staff and both, you know, and both branches and the operations. But until then, this is, this is, I'm working off of attorney's, labor attorney's recommendation. I'm, you know, I agree with him-
Yeah, I know, I know.
You know, so I'm not pulling this out of the air, this is not just me saying this, I'm supporting his recommendation to you.
Glad you're the board, go ahead.
You could see yesterday, when me and you was together, that it wasn't all the Carabelle problem, but with the volunteers.
I'm sorry, say it again.
It's not all the girls in Carabelle volunteers starting all of it.
It's a mixture.
It's a mixture, I mean, you seen that yesterday.
It's a mixture.
Before you said, get deep into it and all of that, you seen it yesterday.
Yeah, it's, it's a mixture of the staff and the volunteers. The thing is, we can deal with the staff and the county personnel rules and policies, the rules that address the volunteers. And I don't think I should be the one make those, I don't think I'm qualified to make those rules as it pertains to the library. You know, I'm, I'm just standing here in place until a director is hired, so.
I got a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman.
Do it.
Now, when you talking about A and B, staff and volunteers, but you got two different groups, A and B. What is that about? It's all one library, why you got A and B? What's going on there?
They just, Commissioners, it's the things-
I'm asking about A and B. Why we got two, why we got an A and why we got a B?
There are two teams. The best I can-
What you mean two teams?
You have a-
You got staff that's employed to work at the library, and you got volunteers that volunteer for the library, right? So what are you talking about A and B? There ain't no A and B. You got employees and you got volunteers. I don't understand the A and B part, and I know you don't want to get into it, but the library ain't run by A and B. It's run by staff assisted by volunteers. Volunteers don't run libraries, okay? They're not paid employees and all this. They assist the staff to make the library functions flow smoothly.
Yes.
So they volunteer to give them additional help to make this thing run the way it's supposed to. There ain't, there ain't no A and B. If you an employee, you on Team A, and if you're assisting the employees of the library as a volunteer, you on Team A. There can't be no Team A and B now. I mean, I don't know what else going on over there, but that ain't the way it work. That ain't the way it work. I mean, that ain't right. I don't even like that statement, because we all on the same team. And that is to provide a good library for the people of Carabelle and for the people of East Point. We have an East Point branch, too. But there shouldn't be no Team A and B. One got a employee, and B got a employee, and then A's got, that ain't the way this thing's supposed to work. So I don't know what's going on over there. But another question, Mike.
Yes, sir.
The recommendation of number three says, "When hired, the new library director shall be given sufficient authority to operate the library without interference. The chain of command should be clearly established and followed by all party." What are they talking about there? The library director should be running things? Well, we all know that, that's why we hire a library director. I don't see where that should have to even be a recommendation. The library director runs, and she hires people to assist her to run these two libraries, and they're called staff. And then you have volunteers. If the volunteers can't get on board with staff, then they need to get some more volunteers, because the volunteers don't run the library. You understand what I'm saying?
I do, sir.
If they don't like working with the current staff or whatever, then they need to drop off and let somebody else drop on. Because the volunteers don't run the library, we don't run the library, we got a director that we just hired to run the library, I think, right?
Yes, sir. Well, you made an offer, yes, yes, sir. Y'all love economic-
I don't know it. This page, this report is nine pages.
Yes, sir.
And there's all kind of conflicts and situations in here, and I'm not gonna get into it, because I mean, it would be the rest of the day, but I'm just saying, jeez Christ. This is one mess right here.
It is.
It's a mess, ain't it?
You just said it all, when you spoke a minute ago, volunteers trying to run the library.
Well, it ain't, I can't handle it. You got volunteers wanting to run the library, they need to go volunteer somewhere else and let the director run the library, or the staff the director has hired. They're there to assist those employees and to assist the patrons of the library where possible. That's what a volunteer does. Volunteer ain't run no library. So I mean, so we, if you gotta have, do we have that in our policy? Or do we have policies concerning the library?
Well, Tuesday, you have your personal set of rules, and I think the library has their own set of policies also.
Well, somebody needs to read them, and this is the way it is if you want to volunteer. If you don't want to get with the program, then you need to find another program. Let somebody who truly cares about the library and the citizen use the library, allow them a place to volunteer. I mean, it's, we keep going through this, and it ain't right, in my opinion. I mean, that, I don't know, that's my opinion, I ain't the board's opinion, that's my opinion.
I'm with you on that.
That's the way I see it.
I'm with you on that.
Well, what I see is the same thing. You got, if you got a volunteer coming in there, they causing problem, tell them don't come in there. Simple as that. Just tell them don't come in there, him, us, or whatever. Child, woman, man, whatever. If they causing problem, get them out that door. That's why you got the director. The volunteers, you know, they, if they want to volunteer and run something, let them go run their house. I don't care, they ain't got no business taking over nothing. They ain't got nobody coming in there taking over. The other people, y'all, that's why you got the director. The director, they have staff, and they the one who supposed to be really running the show. If you got volunteers want to get, do more than that, I'm sorry. They, that's not gonna help. And if they got a problem with it, call nine-one-one and scold them out of there, and that's what you do.
Mr. Chairman. Michael, I support your requested recommendation. For now, it seems to me, we have, in support of all of our concern, we have a labor attorney recommendation. These, we paid for these steps, he gave a big narration that built up to his recommendations. I believe we should use those recommendations and hand them to the new library director as a beginning checklist to start to clear up this issue. In the meantime, what we have done is simply timed out and asked for the volunteers just to take an intermission to clear that standard while we move forward. And I support what you're saying, and I think that's the spirit of all this.
I'm not trying to end the volunteer program in any way, not at all. They're very valuable, you know. But right now, as Commissioner Parrish stated, you know, there should be no A and B, there should be we.
Sure, yeah, with one union, a unity.
The staff is there to support the director, the director's there to do the work, you know, and the volunteers are there to support the staff, but this constant confrontation, it's a bad thing.
Sure, and I think that publicly, we just should be sure we, if we decide on this, that we should say to the volunteers, just stand by for now while we recalibrate. That's what we're trying to do.
That's all I'm asking.
I think it'd be stand by for good, because it's a problem. And it gonna be the same problem when they come back. So, you know, and until they, hey, if you got a problem with a director or whatever, and it's a volunteer, and they not gonna name that volunteer and get them out of the way, you gonna have that problem. I don't care how many directors you get, but they gonna come back and then they gonna try to take over that. They just gonna come in a different door. They going out the front door and come in the back door with the same old mess. Get rid of it, just don't worry about it.
I got one more thing, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
While we, on this. When we hire, and Ms. Kate, you may want to listen up on this one. When we hire a new library director, we need some kind of provision in there that gives us time to find a new library position without this person quitting and walking out within one week or, or two weeks. You ain't got time to find nobody when you ain't got nobody leading the ship. This is the kind of stuff that happens.
Exactly.
You understand what I'm saying? So we in a position right now to do that, whether it's sixty days or whatever. Give us some kind of time so that we can go search for a new library director that you don't end up with this. Because when the library director's gone, everything just goes crazy. I'm running this place and you might be a volunteer. Or I'm running it because I've been here part-time employee. I mean, we need to figure this out, that we don't have this gap in having supervision over these volunteers. And this library director, whether it's the guy that's been recommended there or somebody else, needs to have the ability to say, you want to volunteer at the library? He needs to interview them, make sure they have the library at heart and don't have their own special interest at heart, and they truly want to help the library. If they don't, then you don't need to let them volunteer. He needs to have, or she needs to have discretion about who volunteers at that library, not just walk in the door and say, I'm volunteering. There has to be some kind of control of these personalities and individuals that you're allowing to come in and volunteer around these kids and adults, because most of this is about adults. It ain't nothing about the kids, it's adults over there quabbling and going carrying on. With a new library director, whether you got to form new policies or whatever you got to do to put in place where he has control of that. Now, if he ain't doing his job, then that's upped up. But if he's doing his job, you got to support him, just as we support you or the attorney or finance people or whoever works for the county. If they doing their job, then we got to support them. If that means getting out of their way where they can do their job, or whether we can assist them at some point. But I mean, you hire people, you got to allow them to do their job. And if they ain't doing their job, then we got to take action. But as long as they doing their job and doing what they supposed to do, we need to stay out of the way and let them do their job. That's why we hire them. So I'd like this, some of this stuff put into place before we bring this new director on board, let him know what his authority is. And if these people can't get along, then they need to get on. I mean, this is bad, this report. It's bad.
It's a terrible report.
I don't know what y'all-
It's like the last one we had hired, just soon, she got her masters. She used us and got paid, she got her masters, she moved up and she took off.
We need time to go back out and try to bring somebody else in before the leadership just takes off, and then we got a void. Then all these people run around doing their own thing.
Yet a minute Lisa got her masters, she pulls out.
Well, I'd like to see if we couldn't do something about that.
Well, this guy has a master's already, coming in. This gentleman has a master's degree already.
Well, I'm just saying, but he needs to know what his, he needs to have-
Yes, he does need guidelines.
...
And I think you have a roadmap right here with your labor report.
I don't know about that.
Mr. Chairman.
I don't know, because, you know, naming a game, they gonna money, 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 okay.
Mr. Chairman.
When he get, yeah, when I get through, I get the phone.
Didn't know if he was through or not.
I wasn't. Look, when some come across that internet, different gonna leave, and the next one, and the next. Are they gonna be, he used to making that seven? And soon as some open up down the road where a county able to pay seven, he gonna leave. You can put anything you want in play. You can't stop people from bettering their condition. I mean, that's, you just can't do it. Go ahead, sir.
Motion to approve the recommendation.
Second.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by both. Parrish and, uh, both, Commissioner both, Commissioner Parrish. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I oppose, too.
Uh, no, on the flip side of this.
Three to two.
I'm sorry.
Three to two.
On the flip side of this, I will say I want to publicly thank Whitney Roundtree at the East Point Branch for all of her support, because on the flip side, all I have to do is say, Whitney, I got this email about this and she's, "Don't worry, Michael. I got it. I'll handle it," and she takes it from A to Z and she handles it very well. And she take, she took care of this order. We got this grant for these tablets. I have a clue what kind of tablets we needed. She handled that. There's some other reports that came through. Whitney did an excellent job and I want to publicly thank her for supporting me.
Yeah.
You know, through all the little things that needed to be handled, Whitney handles it with, without any problem, no drama. She just handled it.
Whitney does a good job.
An excellent job.
Yeah, excellent job.
I want to let you guys know and Kate, friends, Whitney did excellent.
But I got something I want to say.
Sir.
I sit there, I'm in Carabelle. I go to the library and I sat. And a couple of them don't even know who I was. Didn't even know I was the commissioner. I sat over in the corner. I seen what was going on. See what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
And it's not all the girls in Carabelle's fault. I seen what was going on. They didn't even know who I was.
Yeah. And, and, and Commissioner, I'll be straight up with you. There's something that you don't think the labor attorney addressed that you would like to let me know. I'll, 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 actually, I-
Yeah, I'm just saying.
Speak to you directly.
I'm just saying. I, I got some stuff for the labor attorney, but I was there. I been through some of this. They didn't even know who I was and I was sitting there and seeing it going on.
Yes, sir. Bad. It's bad.
Yeah, it's bad, because I sat there and watched it.
All right. If you guys are through with me on that issue, I'm, I'm through.
Next on the agenda will be Ms. Marsha Jones.
The clerk submitted an information item that was the holidays for the office for twenty-twenty, and it was in the pack.
Thanks.
Mr. Chairman.
Keep up the good work.
I'm sorry, I was gonna ask you, do you want a break for lunch, sir, and come back at one, or?
If y'all want.
Yeah.
All right, yeah, we gonna go get this possum sandwich.
One fifteen, one fifteen, Commissioner, is good?
Yeah.
One fifteen?
Yeah, one fifteen.